Ready? Okay, Council, you ready? Okay, we'll call the work session together of the Wilmer City Council. Roll call.
Mayor Calvin.
Here.
Councilmember Christensen.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
I'm here.
Councilmember Amen. Councilmember Nelson.
Here.
Councilmember Mesky.
Here.
Councilmember Plowman. Councilmember Johnson. Councilmember Fagerly.
Here.
Seven present, two absent.
Okay. Well, we'll go-
Six, I mean, excuse me.
I think, uh, oh, okay. Um, we'll go ahead and get started. Uh, tonight, I asked the council to get together in work session to talk about the possibility of a local option sales tax. And I'll just kind of do a brief introduction and then I'll hand it off to our city administrator for a more formal presentation. But, uh, a year ago, we had had a conversation about a local option sales tax, uh, that we had with our Representative Baker and Senator Coonan. And we had talked at that time about, uh, having a half-cent local option sales tax to see if there were projects of regional significance that we could look at. Uh, last year, the council, uh, had other priorities that came to the top of the table, and, uh, so we did not address those issues. Uh, when we were down and visited with Representative Baker and Coonan this legislative session for the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, they asked us if we were considering a local option sales tax again. And, uh, so, we brought it back. Of course, uh, you do remember that we did talk about this at our retreat. And then also, there was a question that came up at one council meeting as to if we're going to have projects, uh, we would like to know what those projects are, uh, the dollar amounts and those types of things of the needed for that. And so, uh, subsequent to that, Larry and I have had a number of different meetings. And I know Larry has worked with staff in regards to some suggestions that the council could consider. At this point, no decisions have been made. Uh, and tonight, I would like us just to discuss the local option sales tax process and then see if council has an appetite for local option sales tax. And if we indeed do have an appetite for local option sales tax, what are some projects that we could consider? Uh, over the last three days, I've received numerous emails from people, uh, on projects that they would like to see us consider if we do indeed go down the, uh, avenue of a local option sales tax. I think we're all familiar with our park plan and the needs in the park plan that have been identified. Also, I think people are aware of, uh, some of the facilities, uh, needs that we have, along with other infrastructure needs that are within our community. And, uh, so with that, um, if it's all right with the council, I'd ask our city administrator to give us an overview. He's going to talk a little bit about timeframes, requirements that way, and then also share with us some ideas that, uh, he has, uh... We have a number of people here in the audience. I think we have, uh, what do we have, five, six people here in the audience, so... And then we do have a number of staff members with us as well, so, uh, if it's okay with council, we'll go ahead and go to, uh, Mr. Cruz. Larry, could you go ahead and give us a presentation, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Um, I have a short power present- PowerPoint presentation. And just clarification, we have six present and three absent. A little history on Wilmer's sales tax. Uh, in 1999, the city had a $4 million candy, Ojai Regional Library sales tax. And then in 2004, more recently, an $8 million sales tax for expansion of the airport industrial park, hiking and biking trails, the Blue Line and Civic Center connection. And that tax was removed in 2012. Some key points, uh, Minnesota Statute 279A.99 regulates the local option sales tax. It's subject to approval of the voters at a general election, which is November 8th, 2016. The council must pass a, uh, resolution and state that states the city's approval, proposed tax rate, uses, total revenue to be raised, and the length to be in effect. And lastly, proceeds of the tax must be designated for specific improvements at least 90 days before the referendum, and primarily, they are for capital improvements. Uh, this was the 2004 ballot question. Should the city of Wilmer finance the completion and expansion of the airport industrial park, hiking and biking trails, connection of the Blue Line and Civic Center buildings, and purchase of that portion of the Wilmer Regional Treatment Center campus west of Highway 71, approximately 60 acres, with a one-half percent sales, percent sales tax on all taxable transaction occurring within the city of Wilmer? The projects have an estimated cost of $8 million. This sales tax will expire upon payment of all bonded indebtedness issued to finance the various projects anticipated to be seven years from the date of implementation. Yes, I am in favor, or no, I am opposed? Recently, we were approached by, uh, one of our sister cities, and so the city has, uh, the city administrators and mayors have met from the city of Wilmer, Spicer, and New London. And there is interest on the part of, uh, city of Spicer and New London to do their own local option sales tax. They both have projects in mind that they'd like to pursue. And so, the three cities have, um, would like to pursue it separately and yet somewhat together if the council so chooses. And it's been suggested that 10 years be a target date. Now, the council can choose something different than that. It's up to each city, but initially, that was the conversations that we had. Uh, for the city of Wilmer, a local option sales tax would generate roughly $2 million, $200,000 annually. And if you looked at it over a 27-year period, approximately $23 million. Uh, that would be looking at a one-and-a-half percent inflation factor. These numbers would be refined as we go down the path if the council wants to pursue. Staff has, has met, and we've, uh, identified some projects of regional significance that the council might consider. One would be a community center, which could also serve as a backup emergency operations center, uh, with offices for mid-Minnesota office space and Rack 8 studio. Number two, Swanson Field lighting improvements. Number three, Civic Center refrigeration improvements. Number four, Robins Island Regional Park improvements. Number five, year-round arena ice facility, that would be a third sheet. Number six, multifamily workforce housing incentive. Number seven, a regional emergency training center. Number eight, a curling club facility. Number nine, Block 50 parking structure. And number 10, uh, the South End Overpass. So, those are just some generic, uh, ones that staff has identified, and I know the council has other, other ideas that they would like to bring to the table, and I think we could maybe start that discussion. Uh, staff looked at some high priority projects, and, uh, that would be the Civic Center refrigeration, Swanson Field lighting. I should say that this past year, on the Civic Center refrigeration, uh, we, we've got 35-year-old equipment that is, uh, kind of on its last legs, and it definitely needs an update. The Swanson Field lighting, we've had some studies of the lighting structures there, and they're substandard, both from a, uh, physical standpoint, and then also the lighting that they meant is, doesn't meet the current standards, it's well below. And then the community center is one that we're in the process of doing a facility study, and so this is a little, a little bit of a preview of, of a slide from that study. Uh, that study should be coming to the council in the next month, uh, month to six weeks. And basically, this slide basically says that, uh, the community center is in unsatisfactory condition. It's one of our poorest quality buildings, and, and the amount to invest in updating that facility, uh, exceeds the cost benefit of having the facility. So, in essence, it's, it's reached its useful life, and Sean Christensen, our, our Public Works Director, could expound on that later if you have questions. And so, that's one of our reasons for putting a priority project on a community center. And then lastly, um, the next step, uh, place local option sales tax on the April 18th agenda. So, if you want to proceed, we would do that, and we're not taking this as a workshop, so we're looking to gain a consensus, uh, decide if the council supports pursuing a local option sales tax, authorize staff to work with a consultant to estimate the project costs of priority projects. And then in, in June, evaluate and select projects. July, adopt a resolution and a ballot question. August to October, inform residents. And then November 8th is the election. Then it would go next spring to the legislature for final approval. And with that, I turn it back to the mayor, uh, for conversation about pro- potential projects that you may want to, uh, pursue, and the question on whether you want to go after a local option sales tax. And I'll go back and just leave our list on, up here for reference and questions from staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry, for your presentation. Um, just, uh, so, what we're talking about here, or what, uh, I would like the council to consider, is a half-cent local option sales tax over 10 years. And the finance director would work with the Commissioner of Commerce to determine what those exact dollar numbers are. Uh, the numbers that you've seen in front of you were about $23 million, and those are projected numbers based off what we collected last time. I think, Mr. Olkens, is that correct?
Uh, Larry, we were, we were around $2 million annually.
$2 million annually? Okay. So, um, so that's kind of where we're at, numbers-wise. And, uh, so, we won't know that exact number until after we actually get that number from the Department of Commerce, correct?
Department of Revenue, yes.
Department of Revenue, Department of Revenue, okay. So, with that, I'd like to open it up to the council again, uh, and just kind of see where the, where the discussion goes. And, uh, at this point, I'll open it to the council. Council? Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you. Um, just a question on the second to the last slide regarding the community center. It's, um, you've passed this out, but you could, I couldn't read what was up there. Condition indexes, FCI or NRI?
Mr. Mayor, if I could have, uh, Mr. Christian explain that, please?
Sean, would you, uh, address that question, please? Why don't you stand up at the podium, if you would, please?
Mayor, members of the council, I'd love to stand up at the podium, thank you for asking. Um, the FCI stands for Facility Condition Index, and RI is, um, Repair Index, I believe. And I'm verifying those, those, uh, exact terminology now, but essentially, what that does is it compares what it would take to repair or maintain that facility versus what it would take to completely replace everything in the facility.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, do the projects still have to have regional purpose, then?
Correct. They have to have a regional significance, that's correct.
Because some of these, I don't think really do, do they? More like a wish list.
Well, I guess that's up to the council to have that discussion. I mean, um, I think that this is a list that staff came up with. You know, if we wanted to put something else on that list, that certainly would be possible. We could do that. I mean, I received some emails over the weekend about a field house, and some of our constituents are saying they'd like to see a field house. Um, you know, that's not on the list.
But I know, I've heard stories that the Curling Club is looking at their own facility. So, if they build their own on city land, we don't need to do one.
Correct.
Robins Island Regional Park improvements, I don't know what that means. I know there's a group, I received a call over the weekend, I wasn't around, but they're proposing doing improvements with private money. So, I got to get back to the gentleman. I don't know, community center, sure, that'd be great. The backup emergency operations center. You would think there'd be state or federal dollars for that. Same way with, uh, Regional Emergency Training Center, so, I don't know.
Well, I think that this is a list that staff came up with. Um, you know, if you take a look at what happened last year with the avian influenza out at the, um, ELC, basically tied up that facility for basically the majority of, uh, spring and summer. Chief Hanson, I'm not sure if you know how many months that was. Um, but, you know, if we would have had another event within the community, we would have had to go to a secondary site, which currently is the fire station, and there's not the facilities there, uh, you know, to adequately have that. You know, I think part of the idea is, is that we would leverage local dollars with grants, um, private donations, those types of things. You know, I think if you put a price tag on all of that stuff, I mean, just our, just our park plan showed that we were more than $20 million behind on our park plan, uh, if we did everything that was in the park plan. Um, our facility study, we don't know the number on that yet, but, you know, the estimates are fairly high on that as well. You know, we haven't really talked a whole lot about workforce housing. You know, the study showed that there was a need for workforce housing within the community. The Block 50 parking structure, that's something that's been talked about since the late 80s. And, you know, that'd be on Block 50, which is between Rice Hospital and the library. But I think if you took and put the price on all these different projects up there, you'd find that you quickly exceeded the amount of money we're talking about. That's why I think the city administrator, uh, said that this is kind of a idea for conversation. I mean, you're not going to be able to do every one of those pieces. Council would have to prioritize that. And, you know, if we add the field house into that, I think that, you know, when that was being talked about with the school district, I think that was in the neighborhood of, you know, three to five million, uh, for that project alone. And I mean, I'm sure a lot of you guys have received comments from the public as well, so... Councilmember Mesky?
Well, first, I'll say that I'm not opposed to local option sales taxes. I think that it comes in very handy when we have a need that we've identified. For me, this seems, feels backwards that we're talking about going out to ask for a, a tax increase before we even know what it's for, and I don't know what the values on any of these are. It seems very strange to me that, you know, I would want to see a priority listing, put a price tag on them, and then explore if we would do it. I mean, we're already talking about, we're talking about doing it for 10 years, and we don't know what anything costs. It's very odd for me. It feels, it feels like we're putting the cart before the horse. And we talk about other communities, Spicer and New London doing it, but is that just so everybody has a half-a-cent sales tax in all the cities? Is that what we're talking about? Or was there a project that people were going to come into it together? It's a little unclear, so I'm a little fuzzy right now, but I'm not opposed to a local option sales tax, but I want to know what the price tag is for the project first, and I, and we're not doing it that way, but I'll wait and see.
Yeah, and I think, uh, I'll try to answer that a little bit. We were, the city administrator and I were getting afraid, or were concerned that we were kind of getting a, a little bit ahead of the council. And so, I didn't want to direct staff to start putting numbers to this if there was no council support for local option sales tax. So, I don't know that numbers have been generated for any of this yet, but, you know, you kind of have to agree that you either support a local option sales tax or you don't. Then you develop the projects, then you develop the questions. So, if you look in the time for, timeline that was presented to you, that's kind of how it's all laid out. And so, tonight is just to see if there's actually support of the council to do a local option sales tax. Then we have to start prioritizing, which will take probably a lot of the meetings for the Finance Committee, uh, where this would get referred to, I would, I would assume, based on our, uh, current structure. Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I, I think that your sense was probably correct, that maybe we were getting a little bit ahead of ourselves, and that maybe the council should have this discussion to see, one, do we think a local option sales tax is a, is a good thing? And I, I think it is. I would agree with Councilmember Fagerly that some of these, I'm not sure, meet the definition of a regional, uh, thing, but we can, we can iron that out. But I think that, what I'd like to see tonight is, is maybe come to some sort of consensus that we think two or three of those, plus some, maybe some ideas that the council has, would make sense to, to go out and, and do some further research on and see, uh, how many dollars we're looking at. So, I really think that we need to see if we have a consensus, first of all. Do we want to do a local option sales tax? And, and I think it's a very powerful tool, and we need to do it properly. So, I, I would, I would say I think a local option sales tax is, is a good thing.
Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Personally, I don't think there's an appetite in the business community presently for a local, local option sales tax by the city, especially now that we found out the county's thinking of doing one. And, uh, you know, you know, our economy across the nation is a big pie, and there's so many dollars in this pie. And every dollar that the government takes out means that there's not any profit to be made by the private sector in there to, to expand businesses and hire more people. And, um, I, I, I look nationally, not just citywide, but nationally, the government is trying to, it's like a monster, taking all the money they can out of the private sector. Uh, I, I don't think there's an appetite of the, the business community for this presently, and, uh, these are all good, you know, ideas, uh, but, uh, we got to live within our budget. We have to think about the private sector, the ones that, they and, and the citizens fund government. And I don't think we need to be taking any more money out of the, uh, the big pie. That's my personal opinion. And I have spoken to several business people, actually, they called me, and, uh, are in opposition to this. So...
Yeah, and I've had conversations with the business community as well. Um, I've also had conversations with our president from the chamber, and I believe the president of the chamber would probably echo what you just said. You know, I, uh, I, I don't think that the business community is standing at the front of the table saying, you know, put on another local option sales tax. But, uh, you know, I have had those conversations. I've, uh, I had a conversation with a, with a business owner in town yesterday, and, um, and he said, similar to what Councilmember Mesky said, he said, you know, don't say how much money can we raise, say what projects are needed, identify those projects. Once you identify those projects, put a price tag with it, and come back and say, okay, this is what it's going to take to fund that, and go about it the other way. And so, that was his concern. I have had other conversations with other business owners in town, and they've told me, yes, they would support a local project, uh, sales tax, if it were for the right projects. And that's, that's the council's responsibility, once, if we decide to go with a local option sales tax, to then pick the right projects. And that's where we hear from our constituents, and that's where it would be vetted through the Finance Committee. And I would guess that there'd be a lot of discussion, uh, if we'd put up another five or 10 issues up there, and the council then would have to start saying, okay, we're not going to be able to fund all of these. But I believe it's a good tool. If we're going to tax our citizens for all of that, uh, those are big numbers. We can't do that either. And if they have regional significance, those people coming and shopping here and are using the services, those people then would assist in paying for it. And that's why, being a regional center, this is a good tool for funding projects. Councilmember Nelson?
I too would support a local option sales tax for the right reasons. I do think that the, that we have a responsibility to listen to the community, perhaps to do some improvements on things that we're behind on, um, some things that are out of our control, such as the refrigeration needs to be done, whether we like it or not, because of change in the type of product that has to be used. I think we have to be careful that we are doing it for the right reasons, and also creating, um, doing it to create a community that will help us to grow and bring more people here to work and play and live, and hopefully increase our tax base by doing some of that. I do think the local option sales tax, um, as you mentioned, brings, um, the, the people who come to this community, um, who work here and go home at night, um, the ones that come in and spend, spend dollars in our community, it helps to, to pay for some things, um, along the line with that. I, I do have a question about the projects that were brought forth by staff, and I'm assuming, since staff spent some time on this, that they have researched what regional significance is. And so, I'm curious about some of them that are on here, um, how they qualify as regional significance. And I too have been getting phone calls in support of everything from improving the restrooms at the Stinger facility, to if you're going to do something at Swanson Field, why don't you make other improvements, and, um, to that area with concession stands and some of the other things, and an improvement to Orange Field so that there isn't, there is an ability to play baseball, um, in additional spaces besides, um, Baker Field. So, I think there is a lot of interest in this. I do think we need to find a way to get the community engaged in what are they willing to pay for? How do we get caught up with some of these things? What does it do to our budget? What does it take off from our plate that allows us to do other things if we're funding it through a local option sales tax? But back to, how do we determine what's regional significance? How does that process work, and how did the staff come up with these that qualify? Or do they?
Mr. Cruz, can you, uh, shed some light on that? And then Steve, if you could just be prepared to talk a little bit about the, um, Robins Island Regional Park, and how that specifically would, uh, be of regional significance?
Mr. Mayor, Council, Councilmember Nelson. I'll just go down the list. The, the community center really serves a broader area beyond the city of Wilmer. It serves the county, and then also, it serves, uh, even as a meeting place beyond that. And in this case, a, a newer facility would probably even be more of a regional center. The mid-Minnesota office is regional, as you know, is, uh, what's called the Regional Development Commission, that serves a multi-county area, currently officed in the basement of City Hall. The Rack 8 studio really is a regional access channel, serving beyond, uh, the city of Wilmer. The parking ramp, um, that, that's a rather expensive project. Uh, what was proposed in about 1990 was 480 spaces there, and so this is kind of resurrecting that concept, uh, on Block 50. And, uh, yeah, as you know, it serves a regional hospital and a regional library, so that would be a, a project of regional significance. Uh, Robins Island, uh, Steve can talk a little bit more about that, but, you know, that, in the park plan, it had almost $8 million of improvements that, that needed to happen there. Right now, we're, uh, pursuing a designation as regional park status, and that makes us eligible for legacy funding, and so, maybe a local option sales tax could leverage some legacy funding. Once again, um, that's a regional project. The Swanson Field lighting and field improvements, uh, those, those are, uh, substandard lighting, and, and there was about almost $8 million, well, $7 million, $7 million and two of improvements in our park plan for Swanson Field. And I'd like to think that, other than the parking ramp, the city needs to have this in our capital improvement plan, so, um, you will be paying this through the property tax or through a local option sales tax in the next, in the near future. And so, really, it, it's, do you want to pay for it by just the city alone, or actually the users that use those facilities? So, it's really a broader question. The Curling Club was looking for a, a facility, and it was suggested at one point that maybe they could, uh, take over the, the Blue Line Arena, and then the city could build a, a third new ice sheet that would be more conducive to year-round ice. There's a lot of efficiencies there that, um, electric, electricity and utility bills are a big part of their operational costs, and having a efficient arena- of their operational costs, and having an efficient arena could be very beneficial. And instead of the Curling Club building another arena, we could maybe lease and/or sell and generate some revenue off of that. And I believe that has regional significance. The Civic Center, as Councilmember Nelson said, has a 35-year-old ice plant, and we need to invest a couple million dollars. And once again, that serves beyond the boundaries of the city, and I think has regional significance. And then the Y County Overpass was another one, that there's a funding gap that the county has, and that might be something that the council might consider. Transportation is a big thing for all of us. So that's a little overview. The Regional Training Center, this was discussed by staff to maybe be a collaboration with the college, where they could expand their programming and bring in outside services for training. Let's say the workforce housing, that's kind of a, it's a tough nut to crack. This is really for capital improvements. And so one idea was that maybe the city could build underground parking in a downtown site that would attract a developer to build multifamily housing on top of that. Maybe if this, through this program, if we provided some underground parking for a facility, a developer would build 60 units or so of workforce housing. Keep in mind, that's not low-to-moderate-income housing, it's not subsidized housing, it would be a market-rate housing. And so that's kind of an overview, and I'd open it up. Steve, would you comment on Robins Park?
Mayor Kelvin, members of the council, Robins Island Park, as you know, is our crown jewel of parks in this community and stretching beyond the boundaries. As Mr. Cruz alluded to, staff is in the process of writing our second application for regional park designation through the Greater Minnesota Regional Parks and Trails Commission. We've had staff from that organization out, along with volunteer board members, to look at Robins Island and to give us input into whether or not they thought that was a quality candidate for that designation, because our first application did not score that well. So upon having those conversations over the course of the last year, we do believe that Robins Island, as most of us in this room would have said before, has a significant regional impact on this area, and we believe that the application we're in the process of completing will hopefully be scored well enough for us to receive that designation from that organization, and as others have said, potentially allow us to be eligible for legacy dollars in the future. Many improvements need to be made to that facility, from roadway and entrances into the park, as well as many of the amenities that are currently out there.
And that also links in with our regional bike paths, correct?
Right. It's the next stop off of the Glacial Lake State Trail that we would say would be the designation area, in essence, standing as the entrance into Wilmer's trailhead as well. I would think Robins Island could be considered.
Okay, okay. Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's talk a little bit about the county that was mentioned, and that they may want to institute a local option sales tax for, I think theirs has to be for roads. And it's my understanding that for them to do that, they have to have a public hearing, and then they just decide, they vote as to whether or not they want to do it, and it's project-specific, as I understand it. So in other words, they'd say, we need whatever it is, X number of dollars, to rebuild this bridge. And then when they did that, that would fall off. That's my understanding. Am I right on that?
Mr. Mayor and Council, Member Anderson, that's correct.
Okay. So, you know, maybe it's something about timing. I mean, I think we need to be sensitive to taxation, there's no question about that. So maybe there's something that could be done in terms of timing on that. I suspect that we aren't, we wouldn't be in a position to be collecting this for probably a year from now, maybe, at the earliest, and they may be done by that time with whatever project they're looking at. So I think we need to be aware of that, and we need to try to work with the county on that. So that was my comments on that.
Councilmember Anderson, I think you make a good point, that theirs has to be specific to a project. And again, they have the public hearing, and then they vote on it as to whether or not they're going to implement that. I have had conversations with both Mel Odens and with Larry Kleindahl in regards to that. And one of the projects that I would really hope that the council would support would be the Y Project, the South End Overpass, and that our funding, part of our funding go to that. That would, if we did not do that, South End Overpass, we would still have an at-grade crossing, which would increase the risk to our traveling public. So if we're correcting a lot of the problems with this realignment of the Y Project, I would think that the city agreeing to assist with completing that Y Project on the south side, that that would make a lot of sense. And I really think that we need to consider that. Again, that's allowing an access into our industrial park with the spur. I know there's meetings tomorrow afternoon in regards to this, and hopefully we'll have some more answers tomorrow, but, you know, I think that that's a project that we would really need to get behind.
Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I look at the list, and many of those projects would require future dollars for maintenance also, and then more employees, more looking after. And are we going to project that out too, in some of our budgets, when we're talking about this? Because, you know, you build another ice arena, and it's going to take more people to operate that, more dollars to, more revenue. Training Center is going to take more people, even a parking structure would. Maybe the We South End Overpass wouldn't, but a lot of the other ones are going to incur maintenance that's going to cost us down the road, which means higher taxes, or money's got to come from somewhere. And the best place we can get more money is from expanding the tax base in Wilmer, whether industrial park, or residential, or let's expand, people who want to bring business to Wilmer. And these sales taxes are going to affect all these people. If the county does a half and we do a half, that's 1% right there. And again, I don't think there's an appetite for it presently. We don't have much to say about the county one, because they can approve it even if they have 20 people that say no at the hearing. So we're up against them. I just repeat, I don't think there's an appetite in the business community for it, and this government that keeps gobbling up money, you know, they take in all this revenue, like I said, the pie is only so big, and they get to pick the winners and the losers by where the money goes, you know? Curling Club, well, they're the winner, you know, and someone else is the loser. And I don't like that when government does it with dollars, and I speak against the sales tax.
Councilmember Mesky.
Well, I like projects that have broad public usage, and I think the ones that we've done in the past have done that. It meets the litmus test, because of course, the voters are going to have to go improve this. It's not what we come up with. People have to still support it. And some of these, you'll have an audience that I think is smaller than others. Some of these are much more broader and will have a more influence on more people. And I would argue that, you know, some of these provide more amenities to the community that could be attractive for businesses as well. So again, I'm not going to throw it out, but I'm still struggling, as you look at this. Does number one, what's the cost? Because right now, we're saying, we're going to, we want to do a $20 million blind pay, and then we fit pieces that'll fit in to add up to that. I'd really want to see, to pick the best project that we think has got the broadest public usage appeal, that the people of Wilmer would be happy to have, the most of the people of Wilmer would be very happy to have, and would be able to go in and say, yes, I want that, and I have no problem with that. And businesses could say, you know what, this could actually help bring more people in. That's the kind of project I'm looking for, and I'd like to know when I can say, instead of saying, well, we're going to go for 10-year before we have a project, to say, well, you know what, I only need it for seven, because that's what the project costs. So I'll just add those little two concerns into the pie.
You know, that's a good point, but at the end of the day, we have to remember, I mean, we've saved ourselves into 20-plus million dollars of debt on our parks. And, you know, I've got new neighbors moving in behind me. I met them yesterday for the first time. You know what the first question was that I was asked? Where's the local park? So when this young lady came up to our house, four young children, two older children, the first question is, where's our park? This is addressing that. The Y Project, we could say, we'll put on the local option sales tax for one year and do the Y Project. What staff did, and what I asked the city administrator to bring tonight, was a possible 10-year plan, bringing in 2.3 million a year with inflation, that'd bring in 23 million. If the council comes and says, we've only got the appetite, or we think that there's only an appetite in the community to do it for one year, and we only want to bring in 500,000, that's what we can do. Because we, as the council, have to decide. It's not the mayor deciding, it's certainly not staff deciding, but staff doesn't want to get too far in front of the council on what projects they should do. If we take a look at, what was the number you said for Robins Island, 8 million?
Mr. Mayor and Council, maybe I could just clarify. I think there could be upwards of $50 million of projects up there, and so you're just going to be able to, you know, maybe pick, let's say, five projects, depending on how big they are. And then the Field House was mentioned, the Dorothy Day Aquatic Center, some expansions there. The council may have other projects of regional significance that you want to bring forward. So there's a lot of need and a small amount of money, and I'd like to emphasize that many of these projects are going to go back on the property taxes and be used by a broader audience than what the city is. Did I answer your question, Mr. Mayor?
You answered my question. I'm not sure I had one to start with. I mean, I think the local option sales tax, you have the users that use the improvements, assisting our taxpayers in Wilmer with paying for them. That's why they have to have regional significance. And if they don't pass the regional significance test with our taxpayers, our taxpayers will vote no. If our taxpayers don't support it, they'll vote no. And it's incumbent on the council to say, we support a local option sales tax, but then we have to pick the right projects. And that's when we'll start getting the phone calls. That's when we'll have the public hearings. That's when we'll have the public meetings, you know, at the local coffee shops and at the service clubs, and I'm sure we'll go out and visit with the chamber and tell them, this is what we're looking at doing. All those things will happen. And, you know, I'm kind of seeing that we've got a consensus tonight to move forward, not a full consensus, but we have more people leaning for the local option sales tax than against. You know, so we certainly could bring that to the question, but I mean, we're missing, you know, three councilmembers tonight as well.
Councilmember Mesky.
The slide on the high priority projects, those three, just a hypothetical, what are we talking about, sorry, ballpark figure, but what kind of a price tag to bring these three projects forward?
Well, I think staff's a little reluctant.
I know, I know they are. I just, give me a ridiculous range then. I just, because you're telling me the whole list is 50-some, I just kind of want to know, if I get the top three priorities, and I applaud staff for putting this together, and if I had to prioritize, I probably would have put these three towards the top two, but I have to have, my head has to wrap around some kind of a figure here, or I'm at a loss.
Okay. And let me just, and Mr. Oakins, you might have to help me out here, but I believe that the initial estimate for the connection between the Blue Line Center and the Cardinal Arena was about 300,000. The final price tag on that was 1.2 million?
Pretty close, yeah.
I understand the ballpark's big. Okay, I get it, but a range, something.
Can you get me a little closer, Mr. Oakins?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the ending figure was a little over $2 million after all the improvements were done.
So understand that staff will give you their best guesstimate, like they did what they thought the connection was going to cost, but in reality, it will be the cost of what the project ends up being. And that's the concern, and let me just, you know, introduce it that way. So, Mr. Brizan Dine, could you give us a guesstimate on the top two, and then Mr. Cruz on the community center?
Mayor Kelvin, members of the council, I'd be happy to throw a ballpark out at you for these things. When the engineering firm did a study of the Civic Center 18 months ago now, Sean, 15 months ago, something like that, the ballpark, depending on what system you used, was between 2 million and 2.6, 2.8 million dollars for a new refrigeration system. Variables in there, because do you have one plant, do you have two plants? So you've got, and then what system you used? There's three different systems, one's fairly new, so they didn't have good numbers on that, because it had been put in so few arenas at that point. Now, 15 months later, I think if we called that same firm and asked them for firmer numbers, they would give that to us. So a 2 to 2.8 million dollar range, I think, is a fair ballpark for the refrigeration system at Civic Center. Swanson Field Lighting, I just spoke with Gallup, Craig Gallup, who is a Musco Lighting rep. They were out this winter and looked at our facilities, and the price tag, the high end of the price tag for that project would be 1.8 million dollars, and that'd be replacing all lighting at five fields at Swanson Field Complex, two baseball fields and three softball fields. There is one multipurpose field called the Blue Field that does not have any lighting on it currently, and that would be a nice thing to add if we're going to get into lighting projects. But that being said, about 2.5 million on the refrigeration project, and just under 2 million on lighting. And that would be full replacement of towers and lights.
Does that include Talton Stadium?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Cruz, do you have a number for the Civic Center?
Mr. Mayor, the architects recommend about $350 a square foot. Everybody has a different definition of what a community center is. This is not a YMCA, it is not a recreational facility, but some people would call that a community center also. But, you know, that could be in a range of 5 to 7 million dollars.
Okay. And I'm going to go to Christensen, Anderson, and Nelson. I did not see hands raised. I looked down, and I seen hands raised, and so I don't know who raised your hand first, so that's the direction I'm going.
Sounds like a law firm. Christensen, Anderson, and Nelson. I just wanted to bring up an aspect of the passing the sales tax with the community, and that is, that the local businesses are really at a disadvantage, as are the farmers, when it comes to voting. We have many businesses in Wilmer that the owners don't live in Wilmer, they don't even get to vote on the sales tax, and they're a minority in the community, and it's very easy for someone that rents an apartment, or owns a home, that wants a new community center to say, yeah, I think we should do that. They don't know the effect that it has on the local businesses, and it's easy to say yes.
Councilmember Anderson.
You know, I think that's an interesting point. It'd be interesting to know what that impact is, because obviously, the businesses pass that on to the purchasers. And does that detract? Does that mean people won't come to Wilmer to shop because we have the half a percent? I just had another thought or two on a project. There's only probably three of us here that will remember when we had what was called the transportation plan. I remember Mel Odens did it, and it was, it looked at, what do we need to do to make sure that the infrastructure and the roads and bridges are correct coming into and out of Wilmer? And I only remember one part of it, but I think if it's, it might be something that we could add to the list as another option, because I think it made sense at the time when we talked about that. So I would say, let's take a look at that transportation plan. If it's totally obsolete, then fine. The one thing that I remember on that was that we were going to put a bridge across Footlake coming up onto Highway 7121. Footlake, coming up onto Highway 71, 23 at Ella. And, you know, we didn't do anything, but there were a number of points in that study that maybe we should take a look at. The other thing that I would like to at least consider is something for the downtown. This notion of housing, that's something that I had also listed. I would like to see, and I don't know if it's even the city's responsibility, but to somehow do something to get some market rate, really nice apartments in the downtown area. And I'd also like to see us consider the Becker Avenue Plan, trying to complete that. That was a big project that we never knew how we were going to fund. If we think that makes sense, I think it fits the regional definition, so just a couple of other options.
Mr. Christensen, do you want to address that transportation plan, please?
Mayor, members of the council, just this morning, we talked about that transportation plan and what that looks like and needed to be updated. The, I'm in the process of pulling that out, looking through it a little bit. If you recall, I've also got money in the CIP for 2016 to redo that, or to not redo it, to update that plan. And so that's already been earmarked for 2016 to update the plan, at least. If we want to pull specific projects out of there, we can sure visit about that.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson.
I'm thinking both ways on items one and two. The Civic Center refrigeration's going to have to be done, whether we do a local option sales tax, or if we pay for it some other way with, through tax dollars. But all that does is basically keep the place running. It isn't making any improvements. I believe, if I read correctly in the lease we just signed for the new hockey group, that there's an expectation that the locker rooms, which I believe are still in the same condition that they were when the facility was built, need to be updated. There was a request for some other amenities to be done over a period of time. With that particular one, I would say that this is maybe an opportunity to look at not just keeping the lights on, but doing some things that could perhaps generate some additional revenue, create some efficiencies in how we function. Same with the Swanson Field Lighting. That is not doing anything to enhance, other than just to keep basically what we have. And there are a lot of needs out there. And I believe they also bring revenue into this community. And perhaps it's an opportunity to look at doing that, and that's another one, that if we don't do a local option sales tax, we will have to find a way to put it in the budget or basically shut the lights off. The community center, I struggle with a little bit from the standpoint of that I think it would be helpful for us to have access to that building study, and I realize it isn't done yet, but I think perhaps there's some efficiencies that could be done with where that's located, and who's in it, and actually having staff in the community center and it being available to be utilized. And so that, to me, is another question with, what are we going to do in doing things for the right reason? So I see we've only, we have only begun to talk about it, and I think the community should have some input. I think if we're going to do a local option sales tax, that's going to last for 10 years, then we should be doing our homework to make sure we're getting an end result that will last for 10 years also with that. And so, again, I'm still supportive of doing it for the right reason, but I don't think we've got our homework done yet to be able to say what it is we should be doing with those dollars.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just clarification on the Civic Center. If we would, you're talking about selling the Blue Line building, and then if we build a new?
There's a number of concepts out there, that could be one of them.
Okay. Have we checked to make sure we could sell it, because it was donated to us?
I think we're confusing two different projects here. The community center is the...
Yeah, I'm at the Civic Center right now.
Oh, you're at Civic Center, okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Fagerly, yes. I mean, those are conversations to be had, they're ideas, but it all starts with a thought and continuing that conversation.
All right.
You know, when, excuse me, when you look at putting 2 or 3 million dollars and just updating the ice plant, if you were able to build a new arena, and then have a new ice plant that would serve both, and then maybe if you were able to lease and/or sell the Blue Line Arena, the net dollars probably makes sense.
Well, we've got to check and make sure, because the building was donated, and there never was an official thank you to that group either, which kind of disturbs me. And Swanson Field Lighting, it's only an issue if you play at night. Do we have enough teams that play on all the fields, you know, May through August?
Mayor Calvin, members of the council, Orange probably gets the most night usage because it's baseball games and they last longer than softball games, but all three of the softball fields are used after dark from May through, geez, actually through September into early October. And actually, on the shoulder seasons, not so much in May, but August and September and into October, all three of the softball fields are used twice a week at night.
Okay. I notice some are really leaning, especially the baseball.
That's why you're seeing it up there. We're in desperate need of making a decision on those lighting towers in the near future.
Okay. And then, community center. Obviously, somebody has talked among themselves, are you planning on bulldozing the one where it's at now? Or are you going to want to sell that building and relocate it to a different location?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Fagerly, all those options would be on the table, and that would be a decision of the council.
Okay. Because I think it's a steel-beamed building, but it's got metal clad.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Fagerly, you noticed next door, they bulldozed a much better building than what we have, and if there's more economic value in selling it than someone using it for an alternative purpose, you know, that may be the best option.
Okay. And then, Mid-Minnesota was up there. Would they move into the community center then, or what's your plan there?
Well, that was, it's a regional entity that serves multi...
Four counties, yeah.
Four counties. And they're in, been in the basement of City Hall for an awful long time, and it is not a very good space down there. So that's why it was brought forward as an option.
Because I sit as the liaison to it from the council, and Sean's there from the public. And they had looked at moving to MinWest a year and a half ago, but the rent was too high. Then they had an offer to move to Broughton, free of charge, in a building there, and they didn't want to move because they didn't want to lose any employees. But, I mean, if we're going to build them a new facility, we need to get a lease, you know, a long-term lease, so we haven't done that yet.
No.
Okay.
You know, I'm starting to hear some desire to move towards the high priority projects. You know, would there be an appetite for the council to have staff go back and put numbers on the 10 projects and including these? Plus, I think there's been three that have been added tonight. And just kind of see where we're at with that? Is there consensus on having staff? I mean, we'd have to bring it to the council on the 18th to talk about, but, I mean, just so we're kind of trying to get us down to some consensus here. Councilmember Anderson.
To respond to that, if staff is qualified, you know, some of those, you know, they may not, we may have to go out and get some estimates from some folks. There might be some expense on that, but I think probably for the, for all of us to understand the scope of what these projects are, that's okay. To me, there's a number of them on there that I don't have any interest in, but, you know, I'm just one, one of eight. I want to shift just a minute, and I want to understand the relationship between New London Spicer and Wilmer. I'm hearing that there is no relationship, it's just that we would do it at the same time, or why? What's the advantage, or why, what's the deal?
Well, they came to us...
Yeah, I understand.
And asked us to sit down and have a conversation. And so we did that. And we reported the time we had the first meeting through the weekly notes. And then we had another meeting last week, which I talked about at the council meeting. And so they would like, if we all went together and did it at the same time, you have some advertising you could do jointly. You know, they would do their own projects, it would not be tied to Wilmer, it wouldn't be, you know, a percentage of Wilmer's money does not go to Spicer, New London, or anything like that. But, and when you're educating the public, if you're educating the three cities at the same time, it's easier to do. You know, one of the things that we heard last time is that, well, I'll go to New London to shop, or I'll go to Spicer to shop, or, you know, and they heard, well, you know, you should shop in New London or Spicer, because we don't have the local option sales tax. Well, this would just be that we would, they have needs, we have needs, and this is a tool, a toolbox.
Okay. That answered my question. I come wanting to make sure we weren't tied together, sharing the pool in any way, shape, or form. Okay.
Councilmember Nelson.
I'm okay with...
I'm sorry.
...with trying to have a consensus of whether we want to pursue local option sales tax, but I'm probably in the same place with these, with this list of, I'm not sure where I'm at with some of these projects, and I guess I think there's some that aren't on the table there. And if we're going to do this, I think it needs to serve as an opportunity so that it frees up some dollars in the city's budget to do some other things. Because we haven't heard about other buildings that I know are going, that the needs are out there. So I'm okay with putting that, but I also think the community needs to have some input here with, if we're going to think outside of the box, and what will help this community to grow and prosper in some of these projects, so that, I think we've got to take the time to do that and come back to prioritize, to listen and prioritize what those projects are.
Good point. Mr. Cruz, could you tell us the additional things that have got added tonight that we've talked about?
Mr. Mayor, council, transportation plan, Becker Avenue Plan, wanting staff at the community center.
The Field House.
Field House? I heard that, but I didn't, it mentioned, is that a one that you'd like added?
I've heard from people in the community that, you know, if there's something that's going to change how the Civic Center functions, then perhaps we should be looking at, what does the Field House bring to the table for dry floor events, or how would it fit into being located by the Civic Center, those types of things? So if we're going to look at it, then I think it's something that was reviewed, and I think there was felt there was a need. It didn't pass on the school, but I also think there were some questions as to whether it belonged at the school. So I'm supportive of putting on that list, just as well as some of the other things that were listed.
Okay. Are there other things that we would like, Mr. Cruz? Mr. Meskey.
Not another, not another thing to add to the list, but back to that New London Spicer, they are both, those cities are pursuing the same exact half a cent for 10-year idea?
That would be up to their individual councils and city to decide as well.
Right, I understand, but that was...
That was the conversation.
Okay. And neither of those have moved through their city councils at this point?
That's correct.
Thank you.
I would say that New London is probably farther ahead than either Spicer or Wilmer are. Mr. Cruz?
Mr. Mayor and council, it is helpful to strike things off of the list that you know that you don't want to pursue, so that would be helpful too.
So is there anything on that list that we would like removed? Because what I'd like to have staff do is to bring a question forward that we could vote on on the 18th, that we would pursue that, but then also what projects we would like the staff to work on. And I agree with Mr. Councilmember Anderson that, you know, we may have to, on some of these projects, expend some dollars on getting those project costs, if we want them to be tight numbers. Ballpark numbers, I think staff is probably pretty good at getting ballpark numbers, but getting tight numbers, if you want those, we're probably going to have to pay for those numbers. Councilmember Nelson.
Two parts to the question. If we vote to pursue doing a local option sales tax, what is the timeframe that we have to come up with the projects and the dollar amount? And then the second part of that question is, we're not locked into 10 years or a certain figure with what we pursue at this point in time. So that same, so we could be open to coming up with a number and then putting it into a timeframe?
Correct, yes. If we decided to take this to the vote on April 18th, you've got the two things that the council would have to decide there. Number one, do you want to pursue the local option sales tax? That does not say that we're going to do it. It just says we're going to start working on it more diligently than we have in the past. And then the second part would be to authorize staff to work with consultants to get the project estimates. Then through June and July, that's when the question would get down to, okay, this is the question, and these are the items that we're going to consider. It has to be prepared 90 days prior to the November 8th election. So that has to be done first part of August, so probably the last meeting in July, or the first meeting in August, that would have to be decided. And then at that point, that's when you go into the education of the constituents. But I think if we're moving that direction, we can have, I mean, if we have, I mean, we're recording this tonight, we can have, we can have citizens start contacting us. If they have ideas they'd like us to do, they could get ahold of us, and start working on that.
Why do we have to make the decisions on what projects? I mean, if we provide the direction that we want to pursue this, why do we have to make the decision on the projects the same night? Wouldn't we have more time to make some of those?
Well, I think what our city administrator said, that is, if there's things you don't want them to work on, I mean, I mean, our staff's not sitting around looking for stuff to do. And, you know, so if they're, if we say that we don't even want them to work on this, we can just strike it off the list. But they have to start working on it. I mean, we think we have a lot of time, but really, we've got six meetings.
I'm just saying that I think we need more input into what these items are, and a little more definition in them, before we send staff down the road and have them spend the time doing it, if that's not what we're going to support. That was the question about, do we have to do it on the 18th, or can't we have a little more time?
No, you could wait until the end of July. I mean, that's the timeframe. I mean, you could wait until between now and the end of July to make that decision. Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, there's a number that maybe I don't understand, so I tend to agree, maybe we need to flush these out a little bit more. I'm also reluctant to cross anything off when we have three members that are not here. They may have strong feelings and have had strong input from community. I understand that it's going to take some time, but I'm, I would be reluctant to cross anything off until we fully understood it, until we had as close to a full council as what we're going to be able to get. You know, and maybe it's another work session, and maybe we just use the old-fashioned sort of thing, like what we do at retreats sometime, and you put a sticker by your first four priorities, or something like that. So I think we need to continue the discussion. I think it'd be very important on Monday night that we see if the council wants to, wants to move ahead with the concept of, the concept of a local option sales tax.
And we have to understand that we're pretty confident we're going to be two council members short at the next meeting as well.
I understand, but that's, that's the way it is.
Councilmember Meskey.
Is that timeframe, August, September, October, is three months a standard kind of a thing for the information to the public process?
I believe that's in statute, I believe.
Statute? So we have basically, if we're going to do this, it's in July at the latest. Is that correct?
The law says that you have to pass a resolution... The law says that you have to pass a resolution with the ballot question at least ninety days prior to the November eighth election.
You could do it before that, but not later than that?
Yep.
So, trying to get some consensus here, do we want the question to come at the next council meeting? Do we wanna wait for the meeting after, seeing that we're, knowing we're gonna already have two people down? Or do we wanna wait till? Councilmember Anderson.
I think, I think we should, we should put it on the next council meeting and, and have the discussion. If at some point in time it just becomes, uh, impossible and, and people change their mind, you know, as long as we haven't put the ballot question out there, I guess we can always pull it. But I think we need to, we need to move ahead and decide what, if the council wants to do it.
So I'm hearing consensus on the council support, the question for council support of pursuing the local option sales tax, but not yet on the question of having staff work on projects. So I think that's the direction I'm hearing for you, Mr. Cruz.
Mr. Mayor and council, I did hear some consensus on the priority projects. Maybe that could be a, a starting point to get some numbers. Keep in mind, like, on a community center, you know, three hundred and fifty dollars a square foot, but how big and what are the amenities? There's a lot of, a lot of variance in what a project would, is going to be at this point, so we can get some very rough numbers if you'd like.
I'm not sure that I heard that consensus. Did I not hear it? I, I don't, I don't think there's consensus on that.
Yeah.
Okay, I think we've, I'm sorry, Mr. Christian, uh, Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're gonna be prudent to, uh, poll the other members that aren't here, whether through email or something, see where they stand on it. I mean, I'm assuming they got the, uh, well, they don't have this list...
Right.
But it certainly should be emailed to them and, and get their take on it, especially the two that won't be there Monday night. Just get their take on it.
I was in contact with one of the members today, and I asked him, uh, if he wanted to, uh, if he wanted me to bring anything up. He said he did not, um, and he apologized for not being able to be here. Uh, he's not here for a medical reason, and, uh, he said that he was looking forward to this conversation, but he was not gonna be able to be here, so. Uh, he did not indicate one way or another if he supported or opposed it. He just, uh, said that he was sorry he couldn't be here, and, uh, he asked for an excused absence, so. So Councilmember Aman is who, is who had texted me. So, Councilmember Mesky.
Well, I would, I would also ask that, uh, it just basically would say something to the fact that you could support a local option sales tax. I think putting the actual number on and the extension of years i- is a little premature. That would be my opinion.
Yeah, that's what I'm hearing as well. Right. I think the question would be somewhat similar to, did you prepare anything about a question? I think it would be just be to, uh, would you support pursuing a local option sales tax would probably be the only thing that would be there. That's what I'm, that's all I'm hearing right now.
I think so.
Is that consistent? Okay, anything else to come before the order? Councilmember Fagerly.
Can I just get clarification? Some communities have field houses slash community centers? Could we do that here?
Uh, yes, you could. It, it can be almost anything you want. It can be a, uh, fitness center, meeting room...
'Cause I know Chas...
Field house. It can be...
Combination of everything. So the entire community, all ages, go there. And I'd rather just have one than have two separate ones, so. If you could find any information out on any combination of them.
Mr. Brizan Dine, followed by Councilmember Nelson.
Mayor Calvin, members of the council, to get to Mr. Fagerly's point, Councilman Fagerly's point, if you want the, the best local, um, option of that, I, I would go down to Redwood Falls and look at what Redwood Falls has. I think they, uh, they probably have what I consider to be the, um, just exactly what you said, a combination of a community center slash field house, um, connected right to their high school.
That's a couple of years old, I think, or...
Yeah, I, I think it, it was, uh, built in the, oh, geez, late nineties, yeah, ten, ten, twelve years ago.
Where does time go?
Pleasantly having fun. Councilmember Nelson.
I too was gonna comment about Redwood Falls, but I think in some of the other work that was done, both with the park plan and, I think, the field house, there's some other good examples of some new facilities. Can't remember, is it Buffalo or a few other places where that same kind of project has gone on, and it might be helpful for us to be able to visualize some of the things that other communities have done, um, when it comes to those kind of concepts with, with combining facilities? So, might be helpful to get some pictures and a few things of some other possibilities.
Okay. Are we asking for staff to bring that for Monday night, or is it that we just want them to look at that for future conversations?
I think just for information.
Okay. Seeing and hearing nothing else, we'll stand adjourned.